Oh, I was like, I said maybe because there was only in the calendar that I was.
I'll be back to myself. Yeah. Yeah. It's actually good because it's helping me remember things. Yeah.
I remember talking with her.
Okay, Hector, are the, are all of the online speaker requests for agenda item?
There are no additional speaker request forms.
Are the one, but one through five, are they for the agenda item?
All of them are for the agenda item. Correct. I'm sorry. I will make that annotation next time.
Okay. Are you ready, Hector?
Ready.
Okay. So at this time, we'll call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting of August 21st to order. We'll call, please.
Councilor Colley.
Here.
Councilor Penamara.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Tassizo is not present. Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Parry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, give a form.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to agenda. Anybody? Council Penamara?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was wondering, I see that we have some folks here to speak on item eight point one, and I was wondering if we could move that up in the agenda. Perhaps right after speakers heard on non-agenda items, if that's a good place to put it. Okay?
Any objections from the council? Right with that, we have consent to move eight point one just past speakers heard on non-agenda item. Any other changes? All right. One second while I make a note on my packet for ease. All right. The next item on the agenda is community announcement. Staff?
Just a few announcements, Your Honor. The upcoming events, we have the Harvest Festival coming up on October 5th. For more information, visit www.talentbusinessalliance.com. The city is contracting.
Dot org.
Dot org.
Yeah.
Talent Business Alliance. The city is contracting with the Talent Business Alliance to manage this community festival with you. The Bear Creek Stewardship Day is September 21st from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's a cleanup event at Lutlin Newbury Park. The Road Water, Road River Watershed Council will close the Bear Creek Greenway from August 19th to August 30th. There's construction activity going on in the creek. It's a part of a grant-funded restoration project. This week, we signed an intergovernmental agreement with the, with the Office of Emergency Management in FEMA for the Bear Creek Wildfire Mitigation Project. That's a long part of it's been long in coming. I believe the total amount is 1.3 million dollars. We're now awaiting for the IGA to be signed and returned so we can get going on that project hopefully in the fall. The reader board stationed near schools is to remind residents to slow down in school zones as children return to school on September 3rd. The deadline for filing for the 2024 General City Council election asked yesterday. We currently have six candidates for three seats, and there are, there's one of those candidates is still awaiting signature very quickly. Weed abatement is still underway. We encourage people to keep weeds at six inches or shorter through the remainder of the fire season. City offices will be closed on September 2nd in observance of Labor Day. I'll have some other reports in the city manager report.
Thank you so much. Are there any other community announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to speakers heard on non-agenda items. At this time, I'm going to ask Hector, have you received any speaker request forms online?
For non-agenda items, we have not.
Okay, so there are no more than the five that I already have listed.
Correct.
Okay. And then for the audience, this is the last opportunity. We'll be accepting speaker request forms. So if you have, if you want to make a submission, the request forms are right outside the door. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open up item number four.
Mayor, apologies. I do believe that Kimberly has.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Seeing, seeing no more. Yeah. Thank you, Hector. That's just the kind of backup that I need, and I really appreciate it. Okay, so if we could call Kim. Is it McWayne? Yeah, please come forth and state, he's going to mic you up. And you can state your name and your city for the record.
Kimberly McWayne, City of House. A couple of months ago, we talked about the hot story of the fires, the larger center in the Bay Area. Giving more information on when we accessed the fire, it would be out in the preview, the R O. I've had forward a couple of the access letters to a couple of the council members here, and they don't have any information, so we have no time left. If that was something that, and that's why I called it like, first for the preview, maybe. I don't know. How access is, they're locked up, there might be a lot because they're longer than the gateway. They have that power, they're straight to the heat center of the house, that took a few minutes of, and then they're, they're going to hide it. Where it goes, a lot of the information from the access, how to be. First, he says the access doesn't have any knowledge of it, so we're not getting into the city council.
Mandate replacing gas appliances with equipment. Uh appliances and equipment with electric versions. And it does not require that new installations of appliances be based on any particular technology. What it does is this. First, it commits the city to explore ways and resources to play an active role in achieving greater public appreciation. Of the health-related impacts of question-based in-house appliances and equipment. Second, it commits the city to explore legally allowable ways and resources for mitigating. Health impacts of pollution in residents and other buildings in talent. And finally, it urges the state and county to accelerate the transition to zero emitting appliances. Uh, this resolution was not, as I mentioned, staff initiated and its final wording is of course. Up to the council to approve. With that, I'm happy to answer.
Councilor Penamriff?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say, Dave, I think you did a great job uh with this resolution. It does read much better. It is much clearer. Um, so one of the things that you said what this doesn't do in terms of mandating. People swapping out um their appliances or anything like that. Yeah, that's definitely true. In fact, if 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 a city were to do something like that. It probably wouldn't be in the form of a resolution. Would that be an ordinance, for example?
Yes, it would would need to be.
Okay, so there's there's no way that this is binding on anyone. It's just our resolve, hence resolution uh to do something.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh, so with that, I'll go ahead and start speaker request forms. I generally take speaker request forms in the order that I receive them. And I received the online request forms first, so we're gonna go start there and then we'll uh we'll carry on from there. Um, so the first speaker request that I have is for Ally Rosenbluth. Ally with us tonight?
I don't see Ally Rosenbluth in the audience.
Okay. I thought maybe it might be the iPhone, but. If uh if it is a phone, how do you, with star six, will turn your mic on, is that right?
So.
Yeah. Alright, so if Ally, if you're with us by phone, if you just star six, it'll turn your mic. Microphone on. Um, alright, uh, the next speaker request is Kara S- Salar. Kara, are you? Yep, okay, great.
Good afternoon. My name is Kara Saylor and I'm the Director and a Staff Attorney of the Green Energy Institute at Lewis and Clark Law School located in Portland. GEI is a climate policy and energy law organization. Our mission is to develop smart and comprehensive strategies to support a swift and equitable transition to a carbon-free energy grid. I work with cities and counties around the state and in the wider region on legal options available to local governments to reduce or eliminate emissions from buildings. I commend the City of Talent for considering the Clean Energy and Clean Air Resolution. The resolution's provisions are clear and direct, and most important, doable. In fact, I'm jealous of the residents of Talent to be governed by city councillors like you, who are willing to be proactive in the absence of state leadership on building emissions. I know you all are juggling multi- multiple demands and trying to assess how to best prioritize a host of issues. But I hope you will please embrace this opportunity and adopt this resolution and put talent on the map. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker request form is for David Spinney. And I did uh forget to mention that we provide each speaker five minutes.
Madam Mayor, council members and hardworking staff. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm David Spinney from Talent and I am the Chair of the Together for Talent Committee that originated this particular petition. And I wanted to speak in favor of it and be available if anyone had any questions for T for T, Together for Talent. Um, and basically. We have, and I, my own home, we just put in a induction cooktop and, oh boy, is it good. You got it. Anybody that wants to come over and try it, you're welcome to drop by our place and try it for yourself. It's 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 amazing. And there was some question when we presented this originally about the status of lithium being a very. Heavy on uh exploitation in third-world countries. Good news is. In the Salton Sea, between America and Mexico, they've discovered has an enormous amount of lithium. We just need to be able to extract it and then convert it into actual working batteries. The other thing is that we have uh much enthusiasm about doing an educational campaign. About this and and the other, we're actually looking at four different areas, but electrification is certainly a key one of them. So we are appreciative that the city is uh willing to give us support. In creating that educational campaign, which we have actually already begun, but it's more work. And does anyone have any questions for me or Together for Talent?
If they do, Dave, uh they will ask, they have to ask them after the meeting. We don't.
Great.
Question and answer.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I hope you vote yes.
Alright, the next speaker is Emily Bose. And I see her online. Hi, Emily, if you could state your name and city for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Emily Bose of Ashland. So, thank you, uh Mayor Airsled and members of the council. Um, I'm a longtime Jackson County resident. I grew up in the Rogue Valley and currently live in Ashland. However, I have many loved ones, colleagues and friends who live here in Talent. Which is why I'm here today on behalf of the Oregon chapter of the Sierra Club to advocate for the Clean Energy Clean Air Resolution. Talent um has always been a leader in climate action and today we have the opportunity to build on that legacy by embracing electrification. A crucial step towards a sustainable, affordable and healthy future for this community. This resolution is a common sense implementation of the comprehensive plan and is key to reducing energy costs for residents. Improving public health and addressing the climate crisis. Electric appliances, especially heat pumps, are not only more efficient, but also cheaper to operate. In fact. A typical Oregon home with electric heat pumps can save around almost $400 annually on utility bills compared to homes that rely on methane gas. This resolution enforces Talent's commitment to educating residents on benefits to upgrading to efficient electric appliances. And exploring ways to help our community breathe cleaner air indoors. It's about making smart investments now to avoid costly retrofits later. Building new homes with electric systems from the start is not only more economical, but also a critical step to reducing our reliance on fossil fuels. We also can't ignore the significant public health benefits for talent residents of moving away from gas-powered appliances. Studies show that gas appliances emit pollutants that contribute to respiratory issues, including a 42% risk. An increased risk of childhood asthma that I myself have suffered from. By adopting this resolution, we protect our most vulnerable residents from these harmful effects. Talent has already experienced the severe impacts of climate crisis. And by recommitting to this resolution, we can build a more resilient community that is better prepared for the challenges ahead. This resolution will help ensure that we, as we rebuild and grow, we do so in a way that prioritizes the health, safety and affordability of our homes. Finally, passing this resolution positions Talent as a leader, inspiring other cities to take similar bold actions. And I'm excited to look to Talent as an example in this area. So together we can pave a way for a just transition to hopefully 100% clean renewable energy sources in Oregon. Thank you for your time and I urge you to pass the Clean Energy and Clean Air Resolution.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Bob Heilbrunner. Say that again.
I will pronounce my name clearly. Uh, my name is Bob Heilbrunner.
Okay, Heilbrunner.
I speak into it?
Yeah. So if you'll state your name and your city.
Uh, Robert Heilbrunner and I live in Talent, Oregon.
Thank you.
And uh. I'm proud of this community, this community and proud of the work that people have done here on all these different topics, including. Recovery from fire. I've lived here for about 30 years, raised a son here and worked for Jackson County Mental Health for about, I'm retired now, for about over 20 years. And I'm kind of aware that I'm, I I believe that I'm preaching to the choir. Um, but I think that the morale of the choir is really important. Um, and I've I've just been listening to the the convention and come from the. With a sense of inspiration about. That the things that, you know, none of us knows that we're gonna have a very big effect or how to have a big effect and we can get pretty discouraged about the. Uh, amount of impact that we can have, uh, given the already of some of the issues we're dealing with. Um, but. Basically, we're in a crisis right now between a worldview that's everybody for themselves and everybody lifting themselves up by stepping on someone else. And seeing ourselves uh as individuals and as communities and uh has and uh and as nations and as races. Um, essentially in competition with each other. And so what I'm gonna say is that every but every way that we, in the smallest ways that we can. Are good and decent neighbors. And live in a way that acknowledges the fact that we're all in this together. Uh, we're striking a blow. And um. And 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 and, you know, in in the teachings of of the first humans that that uh. Were native to this land is uh all my relations. Uh, the idea that we're all in this together. And that we're not separate either as individuals, nor as races or sexes or as. Sexual orientations or any of the other ways that people try to divide us. And we're not in it separately as a species. And we're not in it separately as a. You know, we've inherited a world that's been created by everything that has ever lived and existed before us. And how we, how we celebrate and express our gratitude and live. In relationship to that network, which is a network that none of us has built and none of us could build ourselves. Uh, how we live in that with gratitude and how we don't wreck the damn thing um is. That's the question. That's the question of whether our species survives and whether a lot of the creatures on the world, the earth that we think are beautiful and love. Especially brothers, whether they survive, the earth will survive in one form or another. So, um, I think that's the part I want to say. That none of us know is it's way above our pay grade to know whether we'll save the species of the world or not. That's gonna be decided by nature itself. But we can uh be good citizens of nature and be one of the. One of the forces that nature uses to heal itself, just along with the slime mold and the grizzly bear and whatever else lives on this planet. So, um, I'm I'm. What we do matters. And it matters beyond whether it's gonna succeed or not. It matters because it's a statement about how we want to live and how we value life. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shane Hayes. If you'll state your name and city for the record.
Shane Hayes, I'm a resident of Talent. Uh, thank you for having me here today. Um, I was living in Ashland during the Alameda fire and to me, it was a wake-up call. Um, at the time, I was in games programming, um, and uh my mom was one of the people who uh. Searched for lost pets after the fire. And that's when I learned that uh like people didn't even have time to get their pets out of their homes uh during the fire because it was moving so quickly. Uh, this all was a wake-up call to me to uh start looking into what I could do to learn more about climate resilience and climate change. And um start seeing what I could do to move the needle. Uh, so that's a little bit about my background. I'm here to uh voice support for the Clean Climate and Clean Air uh Resolution. I believe this is a critical step for the City of Talent to um start looking into what it can do. To ultimately make itself more resilient from uh wildfires to heat waves. Um, there are uh lobbying the uh the state government is something uh that I think. We are uniquely positioned to do, given how we've already experienced so many impacts from climate change. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you. The next person is Susie Garcia.
Hi, you guys hear me okay? Um, hi, I'm Susie Garcia. I live in Ashland, um Mayor Airsled and members of the Talent City Council. Um, I am Susie and I am the Rogue Valley Coordinator with Rogue Climate. I am here to support the climate, the clean air and clean energy resolution. Uh, so Rogue Climate has been working with community members across the Rogue Valley for 11 years to organize. For an equitable transition away from fossil fuels and towards a resilient energy future. I believe that there is power in numbers and that together we are stronger. In the fall of 2020, Rogue Climate staff and community members experienced firsthand the impacts of. Uh, climate catastrophe when our office burned down in the Alameda fire. That loss does not begin to compare with what fellow community members experienced, as so many lost their homes and businesses and so many are still unable to rebuild. The Clean Energy and Clean Air Resolution is an opportunity to ensure that Talent. Continues to rebuild with community health, affordability and climate resiliency at the forefront. The clean air, sorry, the Clean Energy and Clean Air Resolution commits the City of Talent to. One, educate talent residents on ways that they can save money on energy bills by upgrading to efficient electric appliances. Two, lobby the state and other agencies to take bold action on climate. Three, investigate future actions the city can take to help residents breathe better indoors and to move towards a cleaner energy future. This resolution does not take away anyone's existing appliances. This resolution does not prevent residents from choosing to use gas in their homes. This is a critical first step that reinforces what the City of Talent has already committed to do in the comprehensive plan. The benefits of this resolution are significant, including healthier air, savings on energy bills. And action towards climate goals that will make talent safer. I urge you to consider the following points. Investing in climate-ready housing with reliable and efficient electric appliances will save talent residents money on energy bills. Um, consider that a typical new Oregon home with heat pumps will save the occupant. About $390 on utilities each year compared to homes that burn gas. Communities have a right to breathe clean air in their homes. Gas appliances emit toxic pollutants like NOx and benzene, leading. Uh, to 42% higher risks of childhood asthma, cancers and other illnesses. This resolution would support talent to improve air quality and health. To protect talent from future climate disasters, it is critical to reduce fossil fuel expansion. The comprehensive plan. Clean energy element calls for reducing gas and electricity consumption by 30%. And transitioning away from fossil fuels by 2030, thus the year 2030. This resolution is a necessary step towards these goals. Talent communities know firsthand what it means to experience extreme weather. As we continue to rebuild, much-needed housing is it's crucial that we build smart from the beginning. Duckless heat pumps provide heating, cooling and air filtration in the midst of extreme weather. Wildfire, smoke, and while using 65, while using 65% less energy than baseboards and gas furnaces. Gas is not a community-wide solution for resilience. Expanding this antiquated system is counterproductive to the livability of our communities. And Pacific Power must do better as we transition away from fossil fuels. While the council explores the impacts of methane gas on talent. We urge the council to also hold Pacific Power accountable and explore solutions to increase energy resiliency in talent. I would like to thank the council for their efforts to make talent a better place to live now and for future generations. Rogue Climate strongly urges the council to pass the Clean Energy and Clean Air Resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Jornet.
Thanks very much.
If you could state your name and city for the record.
Absolutely. Mayor Airsled and members of the Talent City Council, my name is Alan Jornet. I live in Jacksonville. I testify today as co-facilitator of Southern Oregon Climate Action Now, an organization of 2,000 or more Southern Oregonians who are concerned about the climate crisis. And urge federal, state and local action to address the problem. Although I don't live in Talent, many SoCal folks do and some of them are here this evening. I summarize very briefly written comments that I have previously previously submitted and I hope you've received them. As a retired ecologist, I'm very much aware that our future climate, as projected from the trajectory we are following. Will likely devastate our natural ecosystems and the global biodiversity they comprise. Along with our forestry, our agriculture and our fisheries. In short, our very planetary life support system is in danger of being destroyed and this potentially by the end of this century. It's critical therefore that we all do everything we can individually and collectively to reduce our emissions of greenhouse gases. One of the most potent such gases clocking in at 80 times worse than carbon dioxide on a 20-year basis. Is that gas previously called natural gas, but which better would be called methane pollution. This gas not only contributes substantially to the climate crisis, but is also a serious health hazard as you've read and heard. Particularly for those occupying homes or businesses the gas serves. Unless we all across the planet commit to reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, the future for Homo sapiens is bleak. For these reasons, SoCal endorses the Talent Clean Energy and Clean Air Resolution and encourages the council to pass it today. We also hope other communities will take similar steps and thank you very much indeed for the time.
Thank you. Hey, that is uh all of the speaker request forms that I have. Um, I do want to mention that there are also um. Yes. Yeah, um, so that that's, let me be, make it clear, that's all the speaker request forms I have on this item. Um, and so uh I do want to mention for the record that there are also some testimony letters that we received. We'll make sure that they get forwarded to the recorder so that they can make it into the minutes. Um, so with that, uh, I'll open it up to the council for comments or questions. Are there any further comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, all in. Council Penamriff?
Well, or should we deliberate on the motion?
If you're, if you want to deliberate, yeah, if you have deliberation.
I'll save it for the motion.
Yep. Alright, so uh if there's no more questions, then I will open, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Council Greider?
I didn't hear listed, so I'm just going to uh go through. Resolution 2024 dash 097 dash R.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2024 dash 097 dash R. A resolution of the City Council of Talent, Oregon, to advance the public health benefits of transition to clean air and clean energy equipment and appliances. Is there any discussion? Council Penamriff?
Sure, I'll just want to say, um, I really appreciate the folks that came out to um speak and also um who sent us emails. I heard quite a bit about uh pride and leadership. Um, but I, what I really felt is um what I felt from talent all along is that a community that cares very deeply about the environment. And very deeply about one another. So that was um, that was a good morale booster. So I want to thank you for that. Um, the comprehensive plan of uh that we passed in 2019 um exemplified um those values that talent holds. Uh, at that time, I think we were perhaps the the only uh city in Oregon which had an energy element. Um, a clean energy element to that effect. Um, I think that this resolution actually strengthens that resolve and also um refreshes uh our focus. Um, on this really uh, these really important steps that we need to take as a community. Um, I I think that it it's going to help us in so many ways. Uh, the education campaign, um, letting talent residents know quite frankly, they might be leaving money on the table. Uh, energy efficiency helps all of us. So I'm I'm just really grateful to the Together for Talent Committee. Um, to scout, to polishing a very fine resolution and I intend to vote yes.
Any further, uh, Council Greider?
Yeah, also just really grateful for everyone um that spoke and that took time to come tonight and really excited about. Um, the education piece that was mentioned, um, Together for Talent, just really looking forward to what comes from that. I think that's. Such a huge piece of this and um, yeah, just really excited about that part.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, so, oh, Council Byers?
More of a comment. Should I save it for after a vote?
Uh, if you, you can, if you want to deliberate, you can certainly do that.
May I say a comment after we vote?
Yes, you certainly can. Alright, so if there's no further discussion. Uh, do I do a roll call for a resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, roll call, please.
Colley?
Yes.
Councilor Penamriff?
Yes.
Councilor Greider?
Yes.
Councilor Pesizos absent. Councilor Byers?
Yes.
And Councilor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Council Byers? No, I'm sorry. No, uh, no, uh, applause. Council Byers?
Um, this is, this is a great resolution to pass. I do urge. Uh, the rest of the council and um. Members of our community who would continue to put forward further effort towards our own comprehensive plan. When it comes to sustainability and clean energy, to continue to consider the impact. Uh, even though it is an improved one over that of fossil fuels on communities around the world. That this is not a complete fix, nor is it um. A final step. I think that this is a holistic problem that we need to continue looking at in our community with this. Through this lens where we do have power to make change and make a difference and consider that um. There is always trade-off when decisions are made. There is always impact unintended or not. And how can we continue to think about this holistically and continue to make changes? That if the scale is pushed a little further on this side because of this resolution. How can we offset that push with other decisions, whether it's focusing on improving the walkability of our community? Turning our community into a 15-minute city with um basic needs within a 15-minute walk from everyone's home. Whether it's advocating for improved uh mass transit opportunities, improved access to greenways and bike paths. Um, safety for children walking to school. Um. Improving our urban forest canopy. Uh, improving the the quality of water as it is uh returning to Bear Creek. All of those things will bring us closer to this overall goal and I think it's really important for us to not think that this is enough. Um, and I think it is also important for us to know that in a developed country. This decision does impact communities in countries where they are experiencing extractive capitalism. Perhaps not as much as fossil fuels, but it still has an impact. And I think it is important to acknowledge that, that we are fortunate and enough to not have to deal with that impact in our own community. It is a privilege.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so the next item on the agenda is. Item 9.1, which is the adoption of Resolution 2024. Dash 098 dash R for workers' compensation for volunteer coverage.
Mayor, you're back to, you should be back to 5.1.
Oh, God, yeah.
That ahead. It's okay.
I want to go home. The convention's long. Um, alright, uh, so um. So we are back to speakers, uh, back to 5.1. And um, I did receive a speaker request. And I did receive a speaker request form from Marta Tarancy from Business Oregon Program Launch. And so because I am going to entertain it in just a moment, Marta, I'm also going to ask if there are anybody in the audience that would like to fill out a speaker request form so that I'm making it equal. I am making this exception with the consent of the council. You guys can vote against it, but whenever we have somebody coming in from one of the jurisdictions to make an announcement to our city, I think it warrants an exception, and I'd be asking for consent to relax the rules. And I would make that equal opportunity for anybody who's online that would wish to enter into a speaker request form now. If you want to speak on an item, non-agenda, please raise your hand. Nope, okay. Anybody online? Anybody by email? Just want to make sure I'm giving equal opportunity for anybody who's attending online. Okay, I'm going to check that again when we're done with this speaker request form, okay? Giving everybody an opportunity to submit if they want to. Thank you, Marta. Good to see you, Marta Tarancy from Business Oregon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and esteemed council. I apologize for my breach of decorum. I do not take it lightly. The reason I was late is I am now also on the Jackson County Library District Board. And coming from that jurisdiction, it ran for two and a half hours, the meeting tonight, so I usually do my best to arrive promptly. Today, however, I will speak as a Business Oregon Regional Development Officer. I serve Jackson, Josephine Counties in economic development and community development. I focus on projects. It's been a pleasure working with Gary Melman on the city's interest and possible application for the Community Development Block Grant application this year in this round, so thank you, Gary, for that collaboration and keeping us very informed with where that's at. I wanted to share that Business Oregon is administering a most unique opportunity, and thank you legislators and the state government for it. The Childcare Infrastructure Grant Program, the first of its kind. The applications opened on August 15th, and they're going to remain open until September 30th for 45 days. This is round one of two. We're going to look at the outcomes and the funding FOCI around the state and what kind of projects got funded before we release the application for round two. There are free technical assistance providers that Business Oregon is working with so that everybody from home-based childcares to institutional childcares can submit a successful application. The free technical assistance providers are listed on our website. This is a unique opportunity. And projects that are eligible range from feasibility studies to actual physical improvements on facilities. The focus is both to create new childcare availabilities as well as to preserve the childcare spots that are available that may be at a risk of going away if certain infrastructure improvements are not made at the place of care. It is an absolutely unique program. This is the first time we've touched this world. We are partnering with the Southern Oregon Early Learning System, so they're distributing it to their networks. But I also know that Talent is a very caring community, and I had a chance to come here and make a D-line right after the district board meeting. Additionally, we have a program available with grant opportunities for not-for-profits and other organizations, maybe joint ventures, that do advance economic opportunities for historically underrepresented individuals, whether that's through land ownership, property ownership, economic empowerment otherwise, and financial literacy. So I know there is at least one applicant in Jackson County interested in that. I'm figuring out the microphone, I apologize. And that's all available on the Business Oregon website. And the program I just referenced, it's called the Economic Equity Investment Program. Both applications are open right now, and I'm doing my best to come and talk to communities while those applications are still open, and of course, hopefully then share the successful investments made in the region afterwards. Thank you very much, and again, I apologize for the breach of decorum. You know, that's typically not me. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you, council, for relaxing the rules. Marta, I just want to point out that I think this is just another great example of the focus that Business Oregon has on our state, investing in childcare. We know we're in crisis down here in Southern Oregon, and this is an incredible opportunity. So thank you for coming and telling us about it. We'll do our best to get the word out. Thank you, Marta. Any speaker request forms in your email?
None in my email, although there is a larger than usual audience online.
Yep, and so one more opportunity for online audience members. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak on non-agenda items. All right, thank you. And thank you, council. So we'll go back to our regular procedures, our regular meeting rules. And with that, we're on 5.1, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Five brief reports. One is that citizens may have observed some street patching going on around town. We've gathered together six or eight locations of former excavations into the street that had not been formally patched for some time. We were able to get a good price to get all of those locations patched under a single contract and took care of all of those last week. So there may be some additional patching we can see around town as we make some progress on our street repairs needs. Secondly, we're aware of a water pump power issue in the Upper Wagner Road area. We are addressing that. We're looking at replacing a generator that was removed some time ago to get that system back up and operating. That neighborhood's had multiple power outages, and this pump station provides water to that neighborhood of about 12 residents. So we've moved that up on the priority list, tried to get that addressed as the power outages have become more frequent in that particular neighborhood. Larger issues, the Skate Park Project application is scheduled for final action by the Oregon Parks Recreation Commission on September 18th. Our full funding request was approved by the Grant Advisory Committee. We expect that application to go through on September 18th and can then start the process of, once we get the contracts, getting into a design for that restoration, that rehabilitation project at the skate park here downtown. We're continuing to work with CDBG Pure to put together all of the background materials that they're requesting. They've got a sizable records request, document request that we're assembling going back several years, reflecting the history of how that project was originally envisioned and how it has arrived at the current plan. They're also requesting five years of financial records from the city and some other documents that we're putting together to get submitted in a packet hopefully by the end of this week or the first of next week so we can facilitate moving along with the grant agreement. We're advised that the grant agreement is in progress and that elements are coming together at the state level that will get us to a grant agreement here soon, although there's no date. Recognizing that this is a new program, it's likely to take a little longer than normal to get through the Department of Justice and other agencies for approval. It's also subject to HUD review. So we've got a lot of players looking at the grant agreement as it's being constructed. And then finally, as I mentioned, as you took actor, I believe, at the last meeting, the city submitted a pre-application under the Community Development Block Grant Program for a Community Resource Center acquisition of 49 Talent Avenue for that purpose. The process is that the applicants submit a pre-application. That pre-application is reviewed and that is determined by state CDBG staff to be a project that would, they believe, fits the guidelines of the program and would be a competitive project. They invite you to submit a full application. So today at 4:41, we received an email from the state inviting us to submit a full application by September 30th.
Congratulations.
We'll be working at that. Important that this aspect at this time is to get letters of support. So I'll be working with Hector to solicit letters of support. We already have some back at the Historical Society, submitted a letter of support today. So we'll also be gathering the potential nonprofit partners to try to scope out an organizational structure to help the facility move again. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Greider?
Do they give you any timeline after the September 30th, after the deadline to September 30th?
I would suspect that funding decision would be made by early September.
So let's just clarify for the record that getting input from potential partners could likely mean just engaging with partners that we've already had, but doesn't necessarily mean that they would be accepted applications moving in the future so that we don't have any misunderstanding in the community that we're selecting, we're pre-selecting occupants of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct. We need to engage with potential partners as a part of the application to build the project we've done our due diligence.
Very good. All right, thank you, Gary. And item number five, are there any questions of staff? Thank you for the great report. 5.2 is Urban Renewal Activities Report.
Nothing to cover here other than what happened in the urban renewal meeting earlier.
Okay, thank you. Committee and Commission Appointments, Appointment of Member to Together for Talent Committee. Staff report?
Council, Kat Garrido has been interviewed by the Together for Talent Committee and Mayor. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so this item should have been placed on a previous agenda. Unfortunately, I forgot. That's the bottom line. So I would like to see if we can't place Kat on the committee as a third member.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, for consent to the council to appoint Kat Garrido to Together for Talent. Council Penamriff?
You're looking for a motion?
I am.
I move to affirm the mayoral appointment of Kat Garrido as a member of the City of Talent, City of Talent Together for Talent Committee for a two-year term beginning August 21st, 2024. Second.
We have a motion and a second to affirm the mayoral appointment of Kat Garrido. Looking for the... There it is. As a member of the City of Talent Together for the Talent Committee for a two-year term beginning August 22nd, 2024. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item 6.2, Reappointment of Members to the City Committee and Commission. Staff?
Mayor, following our training with the League of Oregon Cities, I went back to double-check all our documents for each of our committees and commissions to ensure that members were working within the time limit of their appointment. In that process, there were several applications I was not able to locate. And in addition, I determined that several committee and commission members' terms had expired. Together for Talent, I could not locate the appointment record for Mr. Charles Room. He has resubmitted an application. I have it on file. For Together, for Public Arts Committee, Donna Reeves' term expired on December 31st, 2023. I have her application on file. Kathy Doris and Heather Ayers-Flood were appointed in 2020, and I did not encounter any reappointment documentation. I do have their application on file. And the Urban Forestry Committee members Julie Spelitich and M. Wing were also appointed in 2020 and would like to continue serving and have their applications on file.
Great. First, I just want to say thank you, Hector, for doing this research. One of the things that we had asked for previously too to add to this is that we make sure that we assign them their seat numbers as well so that we can start tracking it by their seat numbers and their expiration. You've gotten a long way down the road here, and we're really grateful for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're really bringing our records together, and we see the good work.
Thank you. I will look into assigning the seats as soon as we have these committee and commission members reappointed.
Very good. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint as, reappoint as agendized here. Council Byers?
I move to affirm the mayoral reappointment of Charles Room to the Together for Talent Committee. Donna Ruiz, Kathy Doris, and Heather Ayers-Flood to the Public Arts Committee. Julie Spelitich and M. Wing to the Urban Forestry Committee. Each her two-year term beginning August 21st, 2024. Second.
We have a motion and a second to reaffirm the mayoral appointments of Charles Room to Together for Talent, Donna Ruiz, Kathy Doris, and Heather Ayers-Flood to Public Arts Committee, and Julie Spelitich and M. Wing to the Urban Forestry Committee. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I can see our records are headed for a new day. Thank you very much again, Hector. All right, item number 6.1 is the appointment of, let's see, item number... Now we're at 9.1. 9.1?
Seven.
Seven.
Didn't we just... Oh, yeah. Boy, oh, boy. Item 7.1 is the Consent Calendar. Are there any items on the Consent Calendar that council wants to pull out for further discussion? All right, are there any questions or comments about the Consent Calendar? Seeing none, all those, I will entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar. Council, Council Coley?
I move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Make sure I'm in the right place this time. 9.1 is the adoption of resolution 2024-098-R for workers' compensation and volunteer coverage. Staff report?
Mayor, members of the council. Coverage for municipal volunteer personnel. The City of Talent will provide workers' compensation insurance for the following classes of volunteers and will be noted on the SAFE, which is the workers' comp carrier payroll schedule. Workers' compensation offers important protection because the City of Talent can be liable for any injuries that are incurred by volunteers during their volunteer work. Specific classes of volunteers that are covered under SAFE include police reserves and public safety volunteers, planning commissioners, parks commissioners, traffic and transportation commissioners. The city also maintains a volunteer accident policy that applies to any volunteer not covered under SAFE. That coverage extends to committees such as the Budget Committee, Travel, Public Art Committee, Urban Forestry Committee, Harvest Festival Committee, et cetera. Having two separate policies, so it's a risk management decision made some years ago. Part of the reason for not allowing all volunteers to be covered under workers' compensation as a definite injury occurred, it could have long-term implications on the workers' compensation experience rating for the broader class of the city employees. Resolution extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers is an annual occurrence intended to parallel the city's annual insurance renewal, which is occurring at this time. Not all cities provide their volunteers for workers' comp. But staff believes it's a good idea. But there's a responsibility that falls upon the volunteers as well. And that, that is that when they are conducting activities perhaps other than meetings, such as participating in projects, they need to sign up to participate in the project for that day or that event. Uh, which is why we're trying to be diligent about encouraging the volunteers to do so. So we can maintain these beverages and not have been penalized or, or excluded. So our recommendation is to approve Resolution twenty-four twenty-two-four ninety-eight dash R, Extending Workers' Compensation Coverage to Volunteers of the City of Talent and Rescinding Last Year's Resolution twenty-two-three eight-five R.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Colay?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-nine-eight dash R, Extending Workers' Compensation Coverage to Volunteers of the City of Talent and Rescinding Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-eight-five dash R.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-nine-eight dash R, Extending Workers' Compensation Coverage to Volunteers of the City of Talent and Rescinding Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-eight-five dash R. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, yep. Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yeah.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is nine point two, Consideration of Accepting Artwork Donation from Local Artists. Staff Report?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Sarah F. Burns has offered to donate two art pieces for display at the Community Center. And the Talent Public Arts Committee has recommended acceptance. Staff has met with the T P A C Chair and Council Liaison to discuss the matter, including security concerns and the need for a formal donation agreement. The art pieces would be placed in the wall space between the doors leading to rooms A and B. And would be securely fastened to the wall with information also mounted describing history of the art pieces and information about the artist. If the council chooses to proceed, we'd recommend a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare a donation agreement concerned with that.
Any questions? I just have one. Oh, Counselor Penamriff?
Yeah, actually, I had a question for our liaison to T P A C. I'm just wondering, are those paintings in talent or, uh, I really, I thought they were really cool. I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to the paintings themselves, just for curiosity sake.
My understanding is that they are both of view on, like, if you're looking sort of across or down Culver um, facing west. That, that is sort of the angle that she was capturing. And the first one she painted in twenty-twenty, March, before the fire, and then the second painting was a painting she did, I believe, in twenty-twenty-two, and it was during the summer.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that, for the background context.
And I just have a question. Um, did, did Sarah make a presentation on the artwork to the T P A C and, and is that how we got the recommendation from?
She didn't make a presentation. She and the chair were emailing back and forth. And just had expressed a desire to donate these two paintings to the city because of the subject matter. But she didn't come to do a formal presentation to the committee.
Uh, Counsel Greider?
They're both eighteen by twenty-four oil on wood panel. And my understanding is that they are framed, but I haven't seen these in real life.
All right. Uh, any more questions? Um, so I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation from Talent Public Arts. Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, I move to direct the city attorney to prepare a donation agreement with Sarah F. Burns.
We have a motion and a second to direct the city attorney to prepare a donation agreement with Sarah F. Burns. Any further discussion? Counselor Perry Miller?
Just to note that this recommendation was unanimous from T P A C.
Thank you. Any other comments? I mean deliberation? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. They're beautiful. And I think they'll look nice. Uh, all of the art that we have in the Community Center was donated. And it's, it's just going to add to the lovely collection of local artists from local artists. Um, all right. The next item on the agenda is Item ten, Commission and Committee Reports. Counsel, uh, Penamriff?
Yeah, uh, the first off, the Transportation and Traffic Safety Committee wasn't able to, we did not have quorum. And I myself was got the email, but I forgot to put it on my calendar, so I, I didn't make it either. But I think the meeting again in October. Um, the Talent, Together for Talent Committee had a presentation from Flavia Franco about composting. The wonders of composting. So as we find out more about that, we might have some, some ideas for the city.
So, that's awesome.
Nicole hates composting.
I was gonna ask you if you had seen it, you were doing a presentation at the Metford Library as well, next week or something. Yeah.
Yeah, she does a great job.
Counselor Byers?
Uh, Parks had our meeting last week. I want to say a special thank you to Dave for helping us navigate a, um, a big conversation that we were having and really helping Parks with a fantastic script to make sure that all the public testimony that was supposed to be heard at that point in time was, and in a way that was, um, in accordance with every rule we could think of. And I've, it seemed like the script was really supportive of the chair in running that meeting too. So thank you for that, Dave. And then I would say that discussion was about the potential re-envisioning of some of the components of Chuck Roberts Park. There was good discussion all around. We have a lot of new commission members. So there was also some background being shared, not just for them, but for members of the community who were there to listen and contribute. We ended with a recommendation being voted on by the commission for the council, so that should be coming before council pretty soon. And I would encourage council to hold another very well-publicized opportunity for public input then as well. Uh, people really cared, and there's a lot of background to the thought, the thoughtfulness that these commissioners have had over a long amount of time, these various elements, and then again, the thoughtfulness of looking at a cohesive re-envisioning. So.
Great. I am so excited and really appreciate the, uh, the robust public process that's engaged. I mean, this is not just, you know, Parks land use issues, but, um, yeah, adjusting the master plan that, that we worked so hard on all those years. Uh, and there's some kind of controversial items on there, the uh, the pickleball courts and that sort of stuff. So it's really good that we're getting, we're really taking the time and care to, to get the public input that we're getting. So looking forward to that coming to us. Uh, Counselor Colay?
Uh, Urban Forestry did not meet last week for lack of a quorum. Um, but I just wanted to draw to your attention a couple items that are on the next city council meeting regarding the Citizen Science Project and then the adopted, adoption of the amended street tree list.
And that's coming up on council?
Council, yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Uh, it's kind of a theme of August where there's a lack of forum. I, I think of, of all the years that I've served, August seems to be the, the month. Um, okay. Counselor Perry Miller?
Thanks. Um, T P A C met earlier this month, and they'll be very excited about moving things forward with Sarah's artwork, so thank you for that. Um, they're gonna take one more quick look at their goals document before it comes to this body. They want to just do one more look through um, before giving it back to Gary. And then also so just a tentative date is Sunday, September twenty-second. They're hoping to have another artist meet and greet for the artist that's currently showing their art in City Hall, whose name I can't remember. I think it's Megan, but more information on that. They're still figuring that out and will let staff know the details.
Counselor Byers?
Your point, Counselor Perry Miller, if they're looking for a date, I just happened to have a lovely conversation with Talent Historical Society folks today. They're having a big event on the twenty-first, and it might be supportive of that T P A C event to hold them on the same day. There's a lot of other things happening that day, too. You're right. There's the Talent Maker City Grand reopening.
Bear Creek cleanup.
Bear Creek cleanup. Let's do it all. It's an all-day event. It might also depend on the artist, but that's a good recommendation. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, I did not attend the last planning meeting. Uh, I look forward to Dave uh, giving us an update at the next meeting. Either it's always, usually we both go, but sometimes it's either he or I. Uh, I did, um, participate in, uh, the, um, kind of the initial planning stages for Mayors United. Uh, that's a program that is done every year by Access, and um, there's a big event on September twenty-seventh. It's a fundraiser. And it's really just, uh, all of the cities coming together through the mayors, uh, to have a big fundraiser in Jacksonville in support of the Access Mission. So, yeah, uh, that all went really well. All right. Are there any other committees or commission reports? Hearing none. Um, hearing no more. We'll go ahead and move on to other. And, um, I have a couple other items before we do the look ahead, if that's okay. Um, one is that, uh, the Fire Department is giving presentations on the current condition of Jackson County Fire District Five. They did a, a presentation at Phoenix, the City of Phoenix on Monday. Interim Chief Buster has, uh, uh, said that he would make himself available for the City of Talent. Should we want to have a presentation, I think it'd be really important for this council to be updated in the same fashion. Um, I definitely want to ask him to hone in on some information about the lease agreement that was entered into, um, for the building in Phoenix. Um, there was a presentation that was given to Phoenix prior to that agreement being signed, and there was not a, a presentation given in talent. So I think, you know, when I, I've done some discussions with some residents, just, um, kind of out and about, and I just think there's a real lack of information in talent about, um, you know, the additional costs that that is to our, to that, to the constituents of the district. And um, so I'm really hoping to get some additional information so that we can support our residents' better understanding of what happened and how we went from a one dollar a year lease to what I heard from Buster somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, and it might be more or less, I understand the numbers are, are changing. Um, so if I could ask you to ask him to prepare for that part in his presentation, because we didn't get we didn't get either presentation, maybe he can just bring a brief on both of those two things. Um, can current condition of the Fire District Five and, uh, information about the lease agreement. Uh, Counsel Colay?
Would that be a presentation at a city council meeting, or are you talking about him presenting to you and the city manager?
I mean, I, I think uh, they did, yeah, they did it at the counselor, uh, at the city council meeting in Phoenix. I, I'm happy to leave that up to the city manager who has control over the agenda. Uh, but I do think that having it on the record is a good idea. One of the things I'm going to be asking for them to do is to hold town halls in both cities as they move towards a decision about the disposition of the Fire District. I think it's going to be really important for them to get resident input, since there's not going to be a, an opportunity for people to vote on the decisions they make. Um, so I'd, I'd rather do that on the record than than off the record. So I hope to get that presentation here. Uh, presentation here at council, if, if that's possible.
Good. Thank you.
Um, a couple other things. One is, um, the, with the, um, design of the skate park coming in um, and the potential for, uh, this funding, uh, which I know this community is super excited about. There's such a deep uh, personal history, uh, really, uh, about that skate park and Counsel Byers?
Oh, no, I can say it when you're done. I just, I'm ready.
Okay. You just, is that your dance card?
Uh, yeah, and it is to your point.
Okay. I would, uh, like to ask the council to entertain uh, creating a ad hoc committee uh, and, um, under the authority of the council to create, uh, committees um, so that we can have a recommendation for them, uh, on the design. What I'd be aiming for are people who have uh, that are residents of talent who have a, a, a direct history with the original design so that we can um, get as much feedback about that as possible and that they become, that they're a recommending body to the council. Counsel Byers?
To your point, uh, I would remind you and welcome input as we're talking about this that the Parks did hold a pretty long survey process with the community about would they prefer to have the, um, the skate park just resurfaced or redesigned? And the community said resurfaced. It also was the more, um, financially responsible, uh, uh, decision when you looked at like the value of a dollar over years of life of resurfacing versus completely rebuilding. And so that was the recommendation that came before council to resurface the skate park and keep both its design, its location, everything.
Yep. Great. Um, so I still, uh, think that having a small ad hoc committee of like three, maybe three community members, um, that get to engage a time or two with staff as you go into uh, the designing process, uh, and then come and make the recommendation at council so that we're assured that what we were, what was being sought is and the integrity of the, of the skateboard meets the satisfaction of, of the community. Uh, Counselor Perry Miller and then Counselor Byers?
So just thinking, because I've never been a part of this ad hoc, um, committee creation process. So would this, this would be a separate committee from Parks? And they would still report to council, but they would just have some slightly overlapping?
Yeah, and
expertise?
That's right. Okay. Um, and, you know, there is nothing that would, there's nothing that would preclude them from working with parks along the way and working with staff along the way, but at the end of the day, we'd get a recommendation from this ad hoc committee made up of community members specifically who have, um, a direct history with the, the park.
Just like, and it would just be a more specific focus, obviously, than Parks, which is a much broader
That's right.
broader focus. Okay.
Yep, great. Counselor Byers?
And I also don't have experience yet with ad hoc committees. So clarifying for me, since we've already had a recommendation
And I also don't have experience yet with ad hoc committees. So clarifying for me, since we've already had a recommendation from parks before the council. That parks did choose to adopt in moving forward. That's how we came up with the budget for this project. That informed the grant that Gary wrote. What would the recommendation that the ad hoc committee be making? Since we have already the recommendation of parks for how to move forward.
Yeah, it would just be a recommendation to approve the final.
That it designed. It's like a second set of eyes.
That's right.
Got it.
And and if you think that it would serve the community better as liaison to parks. To ask parks to form this committee and make the recommendation to the park so that they can make the recommendation to the council. I don't object to that. I just think it would be most streamlined to make it.
I think it would be a more streamlined party to have it formed. In addition to parks, not by parks, so that they can work together, but.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Perry Miller.
With an ad hoc committee like this, do we have to say that they have a beginning, a middle and an end since it's a time sensitive thing or do we not need to worry about that?
I I don't think we need to worry about that because I think that the the timeline is going to be determined by the city's timeline.
And the work.
So that they could just float along. Any other question, Counselor?
So this would work at the same way you would basically, people would apply, you would appoint and we would confirm.
That's right.
Okay, and is there, I'm wondering, do we have to expedite this in any way, like give you authority or anything? Can we do this in the meetings up ahead? Are we okay time wise?
Yes, what we would be doing if the council approves of, I mean, if the council's interested in this, it would be on a a future agenda to form. We wouldn't be making the decision tonight. So it would come on on the future agenda to form an ad hoc committee for the purpose of. Working with the Parks Commission and the council. And the staff to provide recommendations on the on the final design.
Okay, and this recommendation would be months in the future, right? Or not?
Yes, that's right. They would follow the timeline of the staff's work. And the reality is is that if we, you know, I'd like to see us make this a committee of three, so it's not a burden for us to find it. To put it together, but the reality is is if there weren't, if we're not able to find three community members, which I sincerely doubt. That don't have some direct. Relationship with the formation of this skate park, the build out of the skate park. We don't, we we can just simply not tie it to an outcome and so that we can. Yeah, so we weren't obligated to have it if we don't, if we're not able to put it together. But if we can, I think it just would be, it would be great engagement. And I think it would really satisfy the community that has been really active. From the beginning about getting this done and and, you know. Yeah, I just think it will be a great engaging process. So if we're interested in it, we can just ask staff to begin to prepare, you know, the process of. Forming forming and putting it on a future agenda.
Will do that.
Okay, thank you. My final item is Gary, your your review is coming up. And typically we do this in conjunction with RV cog. Because of capacity issues, because of their expertise and because our process has been more robust and 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 just really better guided. In partnership with RV cog. So I guess I'm just kind of wanting to take your temperature about that and and if. If we are going to do it, it's kind of a long process. I'd like to for all of us to get it on our our radars now. And begin discussions with RV cog. I don't think we need an answer from you tonight, but I definitely see it coming and.
Whatever process you wish to follow.
Yeah, what we've done in the past is the three executive committee members, the. My seat, the vice chair and. And the council president usually initiates the process and and then just everything that we gather and form, we usually bring it back. It often comes with recommendations from the representative from RV cog. So if nobody objects, I just would like to. Just reach out.
So RV cog? RV cog is familiar with this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've done it three or three times, maybe, yeah. Counselor Greider.
Question about that. Is there, is that something that's already budgeted for or did they charge for that?
They charge for that, but I think we have a contract for our HR services, right? Yeah. So if if there's no objection, then I'll do the outreach to HR. We should have two contracts. I think one of the, it might be worth looking. One of them is for services to the city and one of us is to support. The council.
We have multiple contracts.
Okay, okay. I'm sure that this falls under, we we intentionally asked for a contract that would allow us to do this kind of stuff. Yeah.
Brand management.
Great, all right. So if there's no objection from you, Gary, or the council, I'll go ahead and start that outreach now in the next week or so. And do you do you guys have capacity to start this discussion as well? Okay, great. All right. Counselor Panomarif.
Yeah, I also, my other item would be, you know, the childcare grants and technical assistance that's available. That's. September thirtieth, I think Martha said the deadline was. I don't know that, it seems like it would be a big lift for the city to do some kind of like an open house. Or something. I'm just wondering, does this is more of a question to council? Does anybody know of like the school district? Or if there's any nonprofit that could like do some sort of like kind of open house networky thing to just make folks aware.
Counselor Byers.
Well, based on the the business organ connection, it would make sense to me that TBA would host an open house.
Oh, yeah. Yep, we can definitely take it back to the board and see. How to do that. And then as far as like the childcare thing, I do I do note that Rosario Medina is attending this meeting as she has been. Quite a bit lately and she does the outreach to the Phoenix Talent School District.
Oh, great.
And and they're very engaged in this early childhood stuff. So I I definitely will reach out to her as well and then get her the information and. And maybe we can just start networking this stuff out.
Yeah, I just find that if if you show up to an event and other people are applying and people are answering questions, it gets a lot more energy. People find this. The stamina to apply for yet another grant.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you this, I have read this grant application. I've read this grant. It's it's just. Investments that are being, this is a great example of the investments that are being made by the state.
Absolutely, absolutely. And great for our community too.
Totally. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other? All right, Gary, what's what's on your plate for item number, what is it, ten? No, eleven. A look ahead. Counselor Greider.
Well, I have a question and I want to, but I wanted to give very.
Do an overview?
He has, yeah.
So why don't go ahead and do an overview, Gary, and then we'll entertain questions.
Okay.
Does that sound right? Counselor Greider?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so upcoming. You have. Hopefully the final council rule circuit on September fourth. We'll be bringing back to you a report on the water either system replacement program. At that same meeting. The, I don't believe we'll be bringing back to you a proposal to enter into a contract. But more likely to take a different approach. So that'll be a major topic for that meeting. We've got update on Together for Talent bylaws as new business, tentatively for that meeting. Not sure of the status. And then we have two items from Urban Forestry listed there.
Question?
I I'm gonna let him go ahead and take the full overview and then we'll entertain questions.
Go back?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, then further down, we had on September eighteenth, the ordinance on. Right. We've learned that the council Hector the action was previously.
Yeah, there was an agenda item in the council chose not to take any action as also described in my last meeting. So. The the original thought here was that they, the council passed that and maybe wanted to look at. That's how it came up in the first one. Then we discovered. My understanding is in error, so the council never did anything. So my guess is council doesn't need to do anything now. So I think that.
I agree.
Be taken off.
Cool.
And we have tentatively for that meeting an ordinance regulating camping on city property, but I think we may be. That may be coming further down the line.
And and I, on that one. I I hesitate to describe it, but the ordinance banning camping or developing. I don't think we're ready, at least I'm ready to prepare ordinance, what I was suggesting is. Study session. To help the council understand what other cities in the in the region are doing. And from that to decide what actions to, the council wants to take, if any.
Counselor Panomarif.
I also seem to recall that not necessarily just what other cities are doing, but what the nonprofits working in the space are. Trying to educate policymakers on as far as best practices go. And I think I brought up that Ashland had a committee that created a report, something like that. And having that committee report to us or a member that committee present to us would be useful and I should probably find out more. Like the name of that.
And ask Hector to check into that a little bit. It was like a. We could provide to you ahead of time and the council meeting where. That committee for the city of Ashland reported to the council is online and available.
Great.
That would be something we could send out to you in advance. Rather than take up meeting time.
Oh, totally. Yeah.
So we'll make sure. Get that to you before we have a discussion, you know, in a study session about what else is going on.
Thank you.
Counselor Greider.
My original question was going to be around this because I was very confused that the study session is listed later than the. Ordinance banning. So that was sort of confusing or confusing to me. But also, as we're having this conversation, I just, I'm I'm confused. And a little bit. Put off, I guess, by, I just think language is really important and this keeps coming up as ordinance banning camp, like. It's it's already been phrased in this way. It's already sort of on the table, right? And although this is just a look ahead and I know it's, you know, for our, and I appreciate it and I I I'm grateful that you give us this. But I just, yeah, I guess I'm just. And I'm not sure what the solution is there, but to me, language is important and and just continuing to see that is. I I'm just sort of torn on.
So I'm gonna go ahead and continue to entertain the rest of this discussion, but then I'm gonna ask Gary to go ahead and finish it. Listen, the last time what happened is we got caught up on an item and didn't finish the look ahead. So I that's what I'm trying to avoid. So let's go ahead and finish this item and then I'm gonna ask Gary to finish his look ahead.
I just want to say that I, you called on me, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just want to say that I I concur. I also felt like it sounded like, I think anybody reading it would assume that 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 was the direction. I would recommend something like, you know, consideration of an ordinance to regulate. Camping on city property. So it's it's, I don't know, is that sufficient, something to to stop a consideration of? And then something softer than 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 the word ban.
Okay. And then, so pick us up, Gary, at town, October Town Hall Workshop.
Yeah, we'll. Look at the.
Okay. And then on the other page, October second. Is that what, is that, are those the dates you're proposing for that workshop?
Town Hall Workshops, I'm sorry. I don't have dates, I don't have. That sorted out yet. Still working with consultants on.
And October sixteenth.
The only thing I have so far is the tour on.
So the business that we can expect in October is the Torah and City Audit. Great, thank you for having it so well on time. And it doesn't look like there's anything else on the agenda. So do we, does anybody have any questions about any of these agenda items? Counselor Byers?
Not these, but I do have a question about the look ahead in general.
Sorry, let me say not agenda items, but the look ahead. Yeah, do you have any questions about the look ahead?
Sure, so we have a fifth Wednesday coming up in October, on October thirtieth. We have been looking at those as being chair summits for our recreation and I mean, for our committee and commission chairs. I'm wondering if this new workers comp. Resolution that was just passed might be a good topic for us to address in that summit, especially any processes. That you are wanting volunteers of committees and commissions to follow when working on projects. It might, I, you know. Might help us get us closer to the goal.
Counselor Panomarif.
Yeah, so for the Together for Talent, Hector, we need to meet with you first before it comes back to council. The. Together for Talent Committee needs to meet with you first.
I don't believe I said that that was a need, but I wanted to attend a meeting and just be there and offer any. Suggestions or or answer any questions related to how to really tighten up the bylaws. So I was just really offering myself to do that, but there is no stipulation that I need that it needed to run past me.
Okay, is, and I I'm forgetting, are the bylaws, have you already made corrections to the bylaws? I know they were out of sync with the ordinance.
Have I made corrections?
Yeah, or did, I don't know, but the, I don't remember if the committee did or or not.
But that was one of the things I wanted to tighten up with.
The chair, we could, I could just, I don't know if I can relax the rolls and ask the chair to remind me whether.
Let's let's hear from Hector first.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry, Counselor, could you repeat what you're asking?
No, I I'm just, I'm sorry, are the bylaws in good enough shape to come before council? Are they all fixed up? Are they are they modified?
I think there were two items that needed to be updated. One is the meeting time. Is it in the ordinance, it does say the the meeting, the the committee meets at four P M.
Okay.
Then we would change that to be five P M. And the last one, I think, would be would the definition of a quorum.
Okay, all right. So there are simple, simple edits that are already decided. Okay, great. Then no problem with it. I thought there was more work to be done that wouldn't have been done in time.
There can be. There is some, there are some items in other bylaws that are really interesting to have in bylaws. For example, who signs the minutes, you know, that's, I think that's okay with Together for Talent, but. There are certain procedural items that exist in other committee and commission bylaws that are not found all across the board. And if you wanted, I could, I could come up with a list, but, you know, I spend my time deep in the bylaws.
Thank you so much, Hector. Appreciate it.
I think when they come to council, I'd like to see those suggestions. If you have the capacity to do that, that sounds good. One of the, one of the goals we've had for a long time is to create some consistency across our bylaws. We've talked about it with you as well, Dave, and so getting those suggestions to create those consistencies, if you guys could. Look at that together would be really great. Yeah, one second, Counselor Panomarif. Hector?
Mayor, do you think it would be a good idea to have that? Some, a bylaws review or a bylaws training at the fifth Wednesday? Some, a bylaws review or a bylaws training at the fifth Wednesday? Wherever I would print everyone's bylaws, they could read through them and they could read other committing commission bylaws, see if they, what they could pick and choose or, or even adapt to, to their needs.
I do. Does anybody else? Yeah, does anybody else, how does everybody else feel about that? Yeah, Counsel Panamriff?
Yeah, I prefer that to picking on Together for. I'm just afraid that if it's in a council meeting and we're, and we get best practices and stuff like that, then we're going to spend a lot of time like we did with council rules.
That's very thoughtful.
But I, I like, love the idea of a template of, you know, if you put together, here's a good example of good bylaws. And then, like we said, everybody could compare. That sounds like a great idea.
So is it okay for Together for Talent to hold this item until we, until we can do that? Or do you, do you want to keep going forward? So I would ask the council to relax the rules to hear from David Spiny on that. Is there any objection? Without objection, I have consent. David?
Thank you very much, counsel. I have prepared the changes that Hector has recommended. And he has not seen them yet because they are going to be on the agenda, which he will receive tomorrow. And the idea is to just, the, the main thing is quorum definition. Because technically we do not have, even with three of us, we do not have a quorum according to a current bylaws. So we just want to make that change. And then we'd be happy to, to learn what other committees are doing and have a great template that we can match for a second round changes, if that's working.
Oh, so you're thinking, you're, you're thinking then that you go ahead and adopt your bylaws once we approve them and then amend them after the training in October?
That would be my request, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Counsel Panamriff, thank you, David.
So this is like a technical question, I think, for Dave. The ordinance, just the ordinance establishing describes quorum. Does that super, does that override whatever the bylaws say? Okay, so the fact that our bylaws are, say, a quorum that's not achievable by us, doesn't prevent us from meeting? Okay, great. But we can still go ahead, we just don't have to be stressed.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Counselor. All right, let's resume our council rules. And are there any other questions on the look ahead? Counsel Brighter?
Just to confirm, is it possible to have the study session before the ordinance comes up on the campaign?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
What is?
I'm not sure if it's gonna be an ordinance at all. Okay.
Yeah. And then Town Hall Workshop, what is the, what is the workshop topic?
Workshop topic is the introduction of the town hall.
Oh, okay. I'm thinking like we're having a town hall and it's gonna be a workshop. It's like, I, I love the, I love the way you, you, you go there, Gary.
Town hall, not town hall.
Yeah.
There's a work group that's gonna be there.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
On that matter and they're coming up this weekend.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, that's great. Boy. All right, any other questions? All right, thanks, you guys. The next item on the agenda is written communications. There are none. And except for on the agenda item, which will be in the minutes of the next packets. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:35. Thanks, everybody.